Hey, good evening, Takahoe. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals for the month is this? The month of March 2023. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which we stand, our nation and the God in whose name we hold, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nancy, please take the attendance.
President.
President. President. President. President. President. President. President. President. President. President. President. Before we begin, I'd just like to welcome Carlos Rodriguez. He's our newest member and he, this is his first meeting. He comes to us with quite a nice background. He has a bachelor's degree and he was in the honor society and near and dear to my heart. He focuses on renewable energy and cybersecurity. So it's a great addition to the board. Our previous member, Henry, has moved on to the planning board. Okay, first order of business besides that is the approval of the minutes from the February the eighth meeting. Anyone have any comments?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First item tonight will be 269 Columbus Avenue. Is the applicant present? Please step forward, state your name for the record.
Good evening. Robert Monti.
Okay, thank you. And has anything changed since the last meeting?
None.
Nothing? Any members have any questions of them?
No.
That was easy. You can have a seat. Thank you. The public hearing is still open on 269 Columbus Avenue. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment regarding the special permit for a new business, which will be a personal fitness and training center? Seeing none, I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Does anyone have a resolution in the form of a motion for 269 Columbus?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I got one. Oh, vote.
Sorry?
I got a second. You're going to go vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's why we have an attorney. Thank you.
Okay, yes, Mr. Chair, I got a special permit and variance resolution. The application for a special permit for SRG Fitness LLC, whose address is 269 Columbus Avenue, Takahoe, New York, Section 42, Block 9, Lot 45, for relief from the following section of the zoning code 6 dash 1, special permit. Applicant SRG Fitness LLC seeks a special permit from the board to open a fitness center at 269 Columbus Avenue, Takahoe pursuant to Section 4 to 6 dash 1 of the zoning code, sports and health club requires a special permit. It has been determined by the building department that the applicant's usage falls under a sports and health club. Thus, a special permit is required. Applicant proposes to operate a business generally as one-on-one training center. This usage will have a minimum to no impact on the surrounding area, and we find that the use will compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. In applying Section 6.1 of the zoning code of this application, this board finds, after several work sessions and public hearings, that the applicant has met the standards for a special permit, and thus, this application is approved. Based on the foregoing, this board adopts a negative declaration pursuant to SECRA.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Nancy, please poll the board.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Thank you very much. Congratulations and good luck. That's it. You're free.
Take care. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Next item is 22 Wallace Avenue, area variance for a finished basement. The applicant present, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Erica Gage, 22 Wallace.
Thank you, Erica. So has anything changed since our last meeting?
Nope, nothing has changed.
All right, as we mentioned in the work session, if you could just please walk us through why you're requesting a variance to put a bathroom in the basement?
I only have one bathroom. We're a family of four, and it makes it difficult to just have one bathroom. We don't even have a powder room, and there's no space to add a powder room. And since the space is available in the basement, we were hopeful to pull a full bathroom that would help our family make it easier. The center of the room is, has the boiler and the heater, and the bathroom would be separated from the area. I have the laundry area that's also downstairs that would be available for the tenant-only laundry area. The rest of the area is really used as storage. There's part of it that's like unexcavated, that has like ten inch walls because like they're rocks. So I could really only use it for storage. The bathroom would be separated from that area and would be only for our use.
So the tenant's on the second floor and you occupy and live on the first floor?
Correct.
And the laundry room that's accessible to the tenant is cordoned off from the rest of the basement area that you mentioned? I saw the basement area and I can confirm that what you're saying is, you know, is accurate. You have a lot of stone and small spaces and nooks and crannies. As I'd mentioned to you on paper, it looked as if you could turn that into another apartment after seeing it. I don't think that would be practical.
I don't think that's, yes, it's really, you know, the open space, I could use it as storage. Storage, you could always, whatever little space you have, you could store things, but livable, I don't think that's possible.
Okay. And you know from the building, from the work session, the building inspector explained to you that if you go forward with putting a full bathroom down there, there are certain things that you would have to comply, egress and electrical and plumbing and things along those lines. So it may end up being rather an expensive project in the end, more so than you would originally thought.
I understand. I also feel that maybe recuperable in the value of the house someday, hopefully. Sometimes that's why doing renovation helps you, maybe not your pocket immediately, but later on. But it will definitely help us just comfortable living.
I'd just like to point out, I've been on this board for quite a number of years, and this board is reluctant, if ever, to allow full bathrooms in a basement for the reasons that we have discussed. I don't need to continue to go over them. You understand. After personally seeing the site, you know, it has changed my mind somewhat. I am but one vote, of course. I would like you to, I'm sure you'd be willing to allow other members, if they'd like to come and take a look at the site before we vote on this.
Sure. I have no issues with that.
I don't have any further questions. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
I got, I got one. When you're saying full bath, is this just a shower stall? Is there going to be a bathtub in there?
No, just a shower stall.
Just a shower stall?
Oh, yeah. We, I already have a tub upstairs and I have an eight-year-old and a 20-year-old, so.
Okay. All right.
Anybody else?
I have no questions.
No questions? No questions? I have no questions, so, all right, we'll reach out to you. We have your number, of course. We're not going to just knock on your door and show up. We'll call ahead of time. And I appreciate your willingness to allow us to check the space out. And as I mentioned to you earlier, you know, we're here to help you and the public, you know, but again, we're, as a board, reluctant to allow full bathrooms in basements for a multitude of reasons that we've covered. That's it. All right, so we'll see you next month.
Mr. Chair, just two quick things. The public hearing is still open, so I don't know if anyone wants to comment. I really don't see anyone.
Anyone from the public want to comment? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to leave the public hearing open. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And one thing I forgot to mention, we did receive a letter from a Mr. Fitzpatrick dated February the 12th to 23, and we will make that letter a part of the record. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, Oak's, 5 Circle Road. The applicants present, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Gentlemen, good evening.
No. Yeah, go ahead. You could state your name and, oh, you're going to have to take the mic with you, so.
The graphics show.
I'm sorry, just formality, stating your name and address for the record.
Emilio Escaladas, Escaladas Associates Architects and Engineers. What we're showing you here is the graphics of what we're applying for. The original application for this building permit granted us a railing around this high garage, typical railing, top, bottom rails out of wood and slots out of wood every four inches, typical that you see everywhere in New England type of fence. The picture that we're showing you here, the composite picture that you, the form of the existing garage structure with the height of the new planter, which would match the height of the approved railing. So in terms of height, we're not changing the height, what we're doing is changing the materials. Instead of a slotted fence, it would be a solid masonry element. We were even talking before that the same effect can be achieved with planters that could be brought in instead of pouring this wall. This is a poured system, a poured wall. What you see there, if you were to drive through, it would be a taller surface because the forms come in four-foot height, so the top of the form is not representative of what we would be planning to do. However, it would be a solid material rather than a see-through material. The advantage, in our opinion, is that it would have greenery that would meander in, it would move, it would, it would have color, it would dangle from the surface, so it would mask the solid wall much better than, than just a straight-railed fence. That's it. It's, it's not, there's nothing more to say than, rather than envision something green that can, that can help the edges or go the traditional way with a, with a traditional fence. And I'll, and the other thing that we were talking is that with the open railing, you could actually see anything that's happening in the, in the decking. You could see the furniture, you could see the boxes that were left the night before. With this type of system, it gives a tremendous privacy, both from the street to the deck and from the deck to the street. So I, I think, I would favor that if I was a neighbor. But then again, that's my opinion. That's it. I, I, there's really nothing more to explain.
Okay. Any board members have any questions?
You mentioned that there was going to be a planter and that it would have a drainage system. Where exactly would that drain to?
Well, you can explain, you designed it.
Drain, oh, sorry. Drainage will go behind, it's towards the house, and it's going to be drained towards the gutter which goes into the, it's called Caltech system, which is installed and inspected under the garage. So all the water, nothing going to touch the street. Whatever overflow going to go inside and under the, near the garage.
The hole is on the inside wall of the planter, so.
Understood.
The opposite interior wall at the bottom.
Okay, understood.
And there's a gravel bed system inside so that the moisture can exit.
And can you also clarify that the fence, the alternate fence that you're referring to and the existence of the deck has previously been permitted by the town?
Yes, yes. And the height of the fence was 42 inches and the height of a flower bed is 36 inches, so it's by half a foot lower, actually.
Understood. Thank you.
So on the drainage question, is there drainage on the roof? If you do nothing, is there drainage up there on the roof now?
The drainage, the garage, the top is pitch, so on the side, it will be the gutters which going to go towards the house and inside the garage, yes. So the drainage is been inspected and sufficient for take all the water from the street.
And why could you not have planters with evergreens in the winter to block, you know, people seeing through with a slotted fence?
It is a, it is a possibility, but in reality, any removable planters, they cannot be insulated, and in reality, the vegetation is going to die. Because in this situation, with an 8-inch concrete wall plus two feet, two-inch insulation, it creates the system which will help the plants to thrive and stay green for years to come. And then again, they will be able, I will be able to trim them to create a nice look for, for the neighborhood. Removable planters, unfortunately, even the system, the drainage system will not be sufficient because I cannot drain them in, into the gutter.
I understand. I think my point is that you can have, I mean, myself, I have planters in front of my house where I change what is in the planter based on the season, and you, you could, if you were concerned about the look of the front of the house, there, you could have, you know, one, one plant or something that could survive in spring and summer, and then in the winter, you could have other greenery that are evergreens that would survive the winter. It would not be what you're envisioning where it is the same plant all year round, but I just think it is an important distinction that you can create greenery year-round if that was your goal under the existing plan, the way I see it. I'm not a botanist, but.
Yeah, I am not a, I am not a, I don't have a green thumb. I just, in my life, I just dealt with evergreens and I have it, I have a screen on the back of our property, so you're welcome to see how I make it more private from the neighbors. So like, my thinking was just to create something permanent and beautiful all year round with as little maintenance as possible.
A lot of the energy behind this is really towards the privacy, like I said, between the owner and the street and between the street and whatever activity is happening there. If you look at the original drawing, you can see, especially the lower one, you can see right through, I wish I could do planters all around because then that would really give us the separation, the visual separation that we all wish for. Of course, we're up high, so that's what's creating the issue. If it wasn't as high, I think, I think the, the planters and the trees and the greenery will all, we would all agree, it's like restaurants when they create a little interesting corner just by putting the right planters and the junipers, et cetera, and you have a beautiful corner that you, you're dying to have dinner there with your girlfriend or your boyfriend. And same thing here. This deck is the only place really that this house can enjoy in the outdoors. There's nothing in the back, there's no room, there's no room to the right, to the left. So this front, this front spot becomes the costelebre of the whole house. And giving ourselves a little privacy from the street, I think would benefit both the user and, and the people that are walking by. That's really what drove this idea.
Yeah, but to your point, you have a little privacy on the front, you have no privacy on the side, so.
Well, this, agreed, so who knows, maybe we'll put more plants. I mean, that's what drove the movement to do this, really. It's a, the front is the most visible part, the side is not, but yeah, we probably will end up doing something on the side with, with more greenery.
Well, I respectfully disagree. I drive by it every day, and the side is a lot more visible than the front.
I just want to address the side because originally when it was approved, it was, it used to be big bushes. They were very high, they covered all the garage. The house next to me was purchased by a different owner, and I actually, in talks with the owner, I offered him to put the evergreens along the sides, so to cover all the side. And I, I offered him to do it at all at my expense, everything, you know, I'll do it. So I, I see the point with the side of the wall of the garage, and like, again, I'm working on it to make sure that we will soften this look with these evergreens. That's the, because the owner of the house, Frank and his wife, you know, we're friendly and we're in a good condition, so I offered him to do it, and they, they will let me know.
Is this the house on the left?
Yes, yes.
On the left, so with the discolored wall, that house?
Yes, yes, yes. And the wall, again, the discolored wall, again, it's an unfortunate result of that I still didn't install the gutter, because, you know, I have to finalize the top to waterproof and everything. Once the gutter will be installed, I will repaint the wall. But the main thing, the main concern, what I offer to my neighbor, where you drive in to cover it totally with evergreens, and evergreens, it's, it's exactly the same evergreens what I already have on the back of the house. It's called Lyland Cypress. It grows very tall, it rims amazingly, it, you will not see the wall, you won't even know that the wall exists. It just, the problem is, you know, if it would have been my property, it would have been done already, but because it's my neighbor property, you know, like, again, at my expense, with all work would be done by me, I'm just proposing them to them, and, you know, they're considering it, yes.
Are the planters that you're proposing here bespoke? Like, you mentioned that you had designed them, like, are these prefab or did you craft them?
No, what, the, the, no, it's, in order to make the, the system work, it had to be a poured concrete, 8 inches thick. So in order to put the gravel on the bottom, the drainage system to give enough dirt to the plants for the plants to survive for years to come. So the other thought, what was behind this planter to maybe, again, if you guys would like it, to add the different color on the planter itself, so it visually just going to make that picture more interesting. Because, again, the garage, what you see presently, it's all white, but as you can see on the picture, it's a combination between white and gray. So like, the, the whole thing, it's like originally, years before, we added on the windows to create the lower look of the garage. And again, our, our thought that adding the permanent, permanent vegetation will, will benefit everyone, will benefit me as well as it will benefit the street. But like, it's up to you, and, you know, another thought, what, again, for you to consider, if you want me to move the planter a little bit backward, I will be willing to do it if, if the board would like to have it. But like, again, the idea was for the greenery to go over the garage and to cover it.
And the material, there's no other viable material that would work with this self-watering system aside from poured concrete?
No, but the poured concrete, you won't see the poured concrete. On top of it, it's a choice, either I can do stucco or I can do the siding or I can do the, the stone veneer. It's like whatever, again, it's up to you guys, it's just whatever will make you comfortable. Because it's, it's not like you're going to see the concrete, no. The concrete, it's the, the material which going to hold the dirt, and you know that the dirt has, in winter time, it freezes, it extends. So if I would put any removable structure, eventually it's going to crack. Eventually it's going to, going to crack, and it's going to look just not, not presentable at all, and to maintain it from the front of this, from the side of a street, it's next to impossible. That's why the thought was to put the permanent structure to make it as good as it possibly be and just to make it as maintenance-free as possible.
So going off of what Member Predigus asked you, I think, my, I think maybe her original question, and certainly a question for, that I have, is how, if this is not something that you're buying that, that say, has been shown to work, how did you come up with this system? How do you, I mean, you mentioned before you're not a botanist, I'm just curious, you know, how this was created, how this system was created?
Well, this is not a complicated item. This is a planter. This is just providing enough material for nutrients to survive and to minimize the freeze-thaw cycle. It's not, it's really like a big planter that you see in a restaurant that survives the winter, it's the same thing, but in a rectangular shape. And the drainage is built in because we already have the system, the, the gravity system that goes into, that, the, the same amount of rainfall that will fall in the planter is already falling on the surface of the garage, so that's draining.
But, but just not to, but then I'm more confused because this, the way that this is being presented as though that something can be planted and last all year round, that cannot be achieved with any other planter.
No, what did you say that? It says it's just wider than the average.
Well, I think it's what was being, at least the way that I was hearing it, it was being, it was being conveyed that if we did not improve this, that there was no other way that we could, you know, effectuate greenery and, and everything else that could be trimmed year-round. That, that's what I heard.
No, no, then take that away from your mind. No, that's not, that's not the intent of our presentation. The, the idea is to create the, the fact that this is not a little planter that will be frozen in the first three weeks of winter. It is a real planter, like commercially you see in restaurants, that will survive. And the opportunity is that we have the supporting structure under it to do it. There's heavy reinforced concrete to hold the deck and so on, so we, we have the option that we normally wouldn't have with any kind of a flat wood roof. Now, we have the option to do something permanently, something good, and we can cover it with the same stucco that the outside will have.
I think that's.
You know, it's really an issue of height, as you presented it before. Now, I think survivability and presentation.
I would say it seems like it's a, maybe a convenience or a preference, but I think, at least the way that it was presented to me initially, it seemed as though this was in some way, almost like the only alternative, that it was, this seems like a design preference to me, more than.
No, we just explained it, it's not.
Well, I think the, the challenge here, though, is the original permit was for a fence, and I understand that what you're proposing here is lower than the fence, but the material that's being used to achieve this effectuates almost like a wall, like a taller wall on what is known to already be a cavernous street. And what I, I was trying to get at with my questions was, you know, the planters you're describing at restaurants, the year-round ones, et cetera, those come in various forms. It could be wood, it could be polywood, it could be different types of plastic that have been shown and tested to keep plants alive, depending on the type of plant, all year round. So what I'm challenged with is if this concrete solution is not the only means to achieve a year-round greenery in front of this property, why haven't alternatives been explored that meet more of the spirit of what was originally put forth for the?
Well, the elements that we were faced, of course, were the height, and since the height that was approved was higher than we were proposing, and since the surface of the planter will be soft, will be green, will tumble down, will mask the height, we thought that it was a reasonable proposal. So obviously, that's our position. We certainly can explore other types of planters, different materials, if you want to add another element of color, which I don't think would work there, I think it would even bring more attention to it, but it's certainly something that we will consider with the board. We're willing to move it back, as, as the applicant has stated. Again, we're, we're presenting this as something that we thought was, was valuable and better for everyone. If, if the board feels differently, of course, that's, that's why we're here. But our, our position is clearly stated, we don't want you to think that it's the only thing we can do, of course not. So it's, it was just a way of dealing with this privacy issue, which is really what it is. We're dealing with the privacy of that deck and. We're dealing with the privacy of that deck, and this is the only outside space that we have. And this is the most private, that we can keep it for ourselves and for the walkers in the sidewalk. That's it. It's as simple as that. So it's in your hands. We're willing to accept any kind of options that you have for us. We're open to suggestions. We're not here to demand. We're here just to present what we thought would be the best.
And we're here to try to help you.
Yes.
I mean, Dimitri brought up a good point, and I think it was nice that they put in the glass windows to help make it look. But now, now you want to put a three-foot solid wall on top of it, that negates the whole visual effect of the windows. I mean, as you said, and we mentioned, it's a very narrow cavernous street going up three feet higher. And any type of a fence, I think, is unfortunate, but you were already approved to put up an open fence. So considering moving it back might help. Considering using another material might help. I, you know, my last question is, why did you put the forms up? I mean.
Well, I think the issue in our minds was height. So we kind of said, well, as long as it's not higher than the approved, we are okay.
All right, all right.
It's my fault, it's my full responsibility. I honestly didn't think, because I thought that we're gonna go lower. So, but like again, it's my fault, that's on me. No, you'll use the mic. You'll use the mic.
No, all right.
I'm just saying, it was totally on me. It was my fault. It's my, like, you know, like, I guess I didn't think about this. I thought I'm going lower, so I didn't realize that the issue with the kind of material will make such a big difference. I was wrong. And the other thing, it's like, again, we talk about, yes, it's not only solution, but in reality, there's no product on the market which will be so strong and so well insulated and so well drained as especially built planters. So that's, again, you know, that was the thought for this, just to create it like a custom-made look, custom-made look, which will blend in with the structure. And like again, if you want, we will move it back. We will move it back as much as you wanted to create, again. You know, another thought, maybe, because in the future, maybe I will want to install the solar panels, maybe to tilt the solar panels up front then, to lower the look.
The tiered look, I think, would help, but, you know, I just, Dimitri, how long this project has been going on? It is an eyesore. I don't mean to, I'm not being insulting, but it's an eyesore.
I understand, but.
And nothing gets finished.
Look, I trust me, look, I am paying the taxes for years for this property. This property, every snowstorm, everything, you can see, it's all clean and nice. I never miss a day. For me, I wish it would have been done yesterday. I wish, like, the thing is, the person who suffers financially the most from this project not being finished, it's me. Because, you know, I'm the one who paying taxes and paying the rent for another place to live. So the thing is, you know, trust me, if I would have wanted, I would have finished it yesterday. But unfortunately, it's not like, you see, it's not like it doesn't cost me a dime just to keep it unfinished. The mortgage payment, the taxes and everything, it's just simply killing me. So the thing is, it's not out of negligence. It's not out of that, I just don't feel like finishing. I'm in this situation. Unfortunately, life throws the curveballs at us. And I got one and two and three and four, you know.
So my point, my point is, why not take the money that you're going to spend on this and finish the rest of the house first? I mean, we just keep adding and adding, and it's not done.
I agree. Look, I am working on the house. If you drive, you can see my car in front of the garage. Sometimes you don't see because my girlfriend just drops me and I'm inside the house doing the work. So yes, I do everything what I possibly can to finish the house. And I'll finish the house, but my thought, again, I was wrong. I was wrong, I was clearly wrong, because I did not think that it would be an issue. I'm sorry, guys, it just totally like, look, we need to have a rail. This is a rail. This is lower than it was approved. That's how I thought. It's gonna be, it's gonna have a greenery. Who's not gonna like it? I was wrong, plain and simple. Again, it's just, it's just like, again, and you, trust me, I put as much effort as I possibly can to finish the house. Because like, I am suffering from this financially enormously, enormously. And the thought to put this before, it's actually was the thought to make it as nice as possible for the neighborhood, just to put it, because the spring is coming, so I can plant it, it can grow, and everybody will benefit from this. Trust me, to put up the fence, it would be way cheaper. And like again, again, I was stupid. Here I am, I'm stupid. Yeah, I did the mistake. I didn't think, you know, it's gonna be such a, you know, like, big deal. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And like again, trust me, I would rather spend this money for inside the house and put the cheaper fence, but I honestly, honestly, I thought it's gonna be better for neighborhood. Like, I put the windows, I didn't have to, but I wanted to look, the garage look smaller. Yes, it's big. It's a big ass garage. And my thought was like, again, look, let me do the right thing. Let me finish it, so it's gonna be finished. People gonna walk next to a nice greenery. I was wrong.
No, okay, so you did the windows, that's great. And my point is, now by putting a wall on, it kind of negates the whole point of putting the windows in. So my personal opinion is, consider moving it back. Give us some drawings, let us know what that would look like.
About how much you want me to?
I can't tell you how to spend your money.
No, I, look.
It would be nice, it would be nice if you would finish some of the things already started on that.
Okay, yeah.
Instead of starting yet another project. That's just my comment.
I agree. I was wrong, I was wrong. How much, how?
You don't have to say you're wrong anymore.
Yeah. How far back do you think we need to move it? What would make you guys happy?
How large is the space up there?
This?
The roof space, from when you, from the house to the planters?
Yeah, about 26 feet, yeah. But the six feet?
We'll draw it six feet, we'll move, we'll come back, and then you'll see.
But six feet, we cannot do anything in front, how we do? Can it walk around?
I think then it.
No, no, it would only be stepped back.
I don't know, well, then he would be creating. Yeah, but then he's trying to have things overflow. He then would have to have it just be like, stand, like, if you move it back, it would, you would, the only thing that you could have put in would be shrubbery that goes on. You're not gonna hang it over, so it's just gonna create a wall of plants. Nothing's gonna hang over if you're not at the edge. Well, right, but I, yes.
Yeah, I got one. It's more of a structure one. With all that added weight up there, can the garage hold it?
Yes, the garage.
You sure? Now, the years to come is not gonna start bumping down.
No, no, no.
Yeah?
You can put the tank out of the garage, yes.
Okay, all right, so I'll make sure.
No, it's reinforced concrete, eight-inch slab, plus 12-inch I-beams supported in the middle by 14-inch I-beam, and 14-inch I-beam supported by eight columns there. So this, that's the reason why, look, trust me, we would never do something which wouldn't be, you know, like, a structure.
There, okay.
Any other comments?
Just to confirm, the drainage you mentioned on the roof where it goes down the garage and the ground, is that in place today? Or?
The drainage in place today, but it's not connected yet, because. Yeah, the garters have to be put in place, but here, on this side, it's already tied in, and it goes under the cul-de-sac, which is inside this bay of the garage. So all the water will be taken care. So no water gonna come out. And the garage itself, it's pitched, so that's why the water gonna go on the side, on my property, taking towards the house and underground. But currently, the garters not in place, currently. But the drainage in place, because yes, we have, you know, like outlets and everything, just to connect, yeah.
So just one more time, please, the proposed, the planters is how many inches shorter than the?
It's six inches, half a foot shorter.
Half a foot shorter than the fence that was?
Yes, the fence is 42 inches, this is 36. You tell me to get it shorter, I'll make it shorter. I can pour it lower. So you want to do 30 inches, I'll do 30 inches. Whatever, guys, make you happy. The thought was, again, just to create something permanent, custom-made. I can do 30 inches. So here you go, one foot lower than proposed.
The point that we need fall protection, okay?
No, but we will.
So he can't lower it to a certain height either. So there's a certain height that we'd have to look at the code. Do you remember what it is? I don't know.
36 inches.
So he can't, you can't drop it.
We can put from inside the rail. So we will have the fall protection regardless. So basically, like, again, the idea was to make this wall lowest legal amount of railing, which is 36 inches. That's why we came up with the three feet. It will make you happier to make it 30 inches, yes. To make it two feet, honestly, I don't know if the plants will survive.
That sounds better than me.
Guys, so you, listening to them, yeah, correct.
The plants will grow.
So you pushing it back, it's not gonna let the growth?
So that's, you see, we are willing to do whatever will make you happy. Like, again, lower it, and then on the back, we will raise it the height to prevent the fall.
All right, well, again, my concern goes right back to, it's looming. In a cavernous street, it's looming. So the consideration of lowering the front wall, I think, is a reasonable one. I personally don't care if you grow green over it or not. I don't, it's.
Okay.
Again, you did the right thing by putting the windows in. We appreciated that, made it look a lot better. Now you want to put a 30 or 36-foot wall on top of that? Inch wall?
Look, again, I know, I know it sounds crazy, but look, it's my house where I'm gonna live. Trust me, you know, like, when I put the windows, you know, like, I knew it's gonna look better. And I honestly, I honestly think that while the greenery will take off, you will see that it does look better. But like, again, you know, it just, I would never want to make my house to look ugly or, you know, offensive for anyone.
An interesting point, the more you speak, the more we think about what the issues are. And I'm thinking, if I was to build that wall the way it was approved, I could still pull behind the wall a planter. I don't need a permit. I don't need to come here. I can build a plant, I can buy a planter in Home Depot and have a three-foot, four-foot, five-foot planter, and do whatever I want, and end up with a taller, more abusive visual scenario.
Well, one minute, let the building gentleman speak.
You can't build a four- or five-foot planter.
What I mean, what I'm trying to say.
Whatever meets the codes, 24 inches is what you really want to get.
My intent was not to be arrogant that way. What I'm trying to say is that visually, and people can do it hazardly not knowing, just, you know, the way it comes, you know, we'd be nice to have a corner of tall green so I can sit there, whatever, and create the spatial needs that change with people's taste. So the point is that if someone chooses to go in a linear fashion with a typical two-, three-foot planter, which is what you buy in Home Depot, and then the pines grow on it, you'll have a five-foot wall no matter what we approve here tonight. So it's really, you know, it's a mute point, really, when we talk about how high it is, because it can grow as high as that next occupant wants it to be, with permission of whatever maximum height of planter there is. But the plants can grow quite high.
No question about it, but that's what they're trying to say. He can achieve that with putting a two-foot planter and just putting trees up there, and we're done.
Yeah, yeah, well.
You're the one that's proposing a concrete planter higher than we're gonna allow on the wall.
No, I understand. I'm just saying that the visual discussion, whether it's a permanent or I bring the pot later, is the same. It's the same type of blocking of light and view, which is what the argument is. Anyway, it's a difficult argument. It's on your table, not mine. I appreciate the new thoughts, but as you've mentioned these things, I'm thinking, well, I can still achieve the same sin.
You could not put anything up and just put some planters up close to the edge.
Yeah, we go back to the original plan, and we're all done. Put the fence back.
Well, you know, it's, then you go, then I'm worried as an architect, is the kid gonna slither through the plants and fall? Now I want a rail.
Yeah, well, you need a railing, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but if the planter is there, it's a permanent railing. And if I lower the planter and raise the railing back to three feet, I comply with everything. I get the planter, I lower the wall, which is what you guys want, and I still meet code.
And the railing will go on both sides as well, not just the front?
On the inside. So that, all you need is a blockage of three feet in height.
No, I'm sorry, I'm just, on either side of the house. The railing goes around the whole perimeter?
Well, the fencing, the original fencing would go through to the side. We have proposed it, and doing anything different in the side, it's just the front.
Right. Okay, thanks. I don't have any further questions.
No.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing for Five Circle Road. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public would like to speak regarding Five Circle Road, please step forward. State your name and address for the record.
Anthony Laurie, 123 Waller Street. I'm gonna be very blunt, and maybe you don't even like what I'm gonna say, but I don't believe a word this man's gonna do. Not one word. He's broke more codes, and when he first started, when he came here, he said he read all the rules and regulations he knew. Now he's coming up here and apologizing. He didn't apologize when he brought the trucks there, to bring all that stuff and build that stuff. He was told when he got the authorization that he was supposed to put a rail there. Now we got a Berlin Wall going up over there. Now, how much more we're gonna take of this, Tommy? I mean, I could go back on and on. I had a lady from South Lake Avenue ask me what's going on over there. His house is not street level. You can't even see his yard. He's up 40 feet high. What's gonna block this? He could look in my yard anytime he wants, if it's height from where he is. I can't look in his yard. I gotta look up. I need binoculars to look up to his yard. So who is he kidding with this? And then when he pours concrete, he's gonna block the roads. I'm a fire commissioner. The last time he was here, he had roads blocked without even letting the village know that trucks were coming in. And concrete trucks were coming in, washed their chutes all over the road and everything. Stole the water from the water hydrant without even asking. And the guy told me, we do this in the Bronx all the time. Well, this ain't the Bronx. And I don't think that wall should go up. Believe me, it's an eyesore. It's not bettering the neighborhood. He wants to apologize, that's his business. But that's not my business. We all have bills. We all have taxes to pay. Now, if this thing goes through, it's a disaster. It's a disaster as it is. That house is way out of context in the neighborhood. Everybody's house is street level. You could see everybody's front door, my front door, whatever have you. You're not gonna tell me that foliage that he plans on planting is gonna block everything. So what it blocks is, you can't see up in his yard anyway. You know that, you pass by there many a times to go up to your street. Now, who's kidding who here? Let's get this thing straight. That house is. That house is way out of context in the first place. It's there, so it's going to stay there now. So the man may not like me, I don't care. That's not, none of my business, I don't care who likes me or dislikes me, but let's do the right thing in that neighborhood. It's already out of context. That whole Circle Road is out of context for what this man did to that neighborhood. And not you, none of you guys up here, but the past board that approved of this, I don't know if they drank something or smoked something to approve something like that. I don't know, Tommy. That house, look how high it is up there. You've seen it, all of you that have seen it. None of those houses in that neighborhood are nowhere near that size. And now, all of a sudden, we're going to have somebody come over here and start crying that he's got to pay taxes? We all pay taxes. We all have mortgages. We went down that road, you did too. So now this contents of this whole object is out of whack. He knew what he was doing, he's saying he's sorry. He knew darn well what he was doing. And so did his lawyer, knew what he was doing. So let's correct this, and let not this thing go any further than what it is. I may be a little loud, and I may be a little angry, because we've been in that neighborhood since 1942. He come in here two, three years, and now he's crying that he's suffering, paying everything. Well, he dug the grave, I didn't dig it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, yes, go ahead.
Just one comment, I just verified, because it's important to the board, it's important with the impression that you hear certain things. The height of that roof, as you see it, was exactly the same height of the house that we replaced and built with. So that has not grown in any height, just want to make that clear. It, see, now it's changing. That house is the height of the original structure. That's all, that's all I wanted to say.
All right, Mr. Laurie, yeah.
I think, no, I think we, just, I think we understand that it came onto the street, and it is, it is over there.
That point is correct, that was there. The house that high was not there. Nobody's going to tell me that house was that high there. On top of the garage level, that was there. I know that for a fact. And that was only a one-door garage with two cars in there.
Okay, thank you. Yes, the original variance that was granted allowed the garage to be widened side to side, and that's what created the problem with the cavernous look, et cetera, et cetera, and the height. I think we all agree, we're trying to mitigate whatever issues exist, and to make this look as sightly as we, you know, I don't have all the answers, you know, we're trying to work with you. Putting another stone wall on the top of it, I don't think is going to work. Considering shrinking it and moving it back a little, I think would help. If we do nothing, and you go with the original approval, you can put up the fence, and that's going to be somewhat looming as well, not as looming as a concrete wall, but, you know, that's already been approved. We can't unapprove that. But Dimitri, please, please, finish something. It just doesn't look good, and it annoys the people that live in the neighborhood. So it's kind of hard to say, oh, yeah, yeah, here's another variance. Trying to help you, but you have to cooperate too. That's my side comment. Any, anyone else in the public like to comment regarding Five Circle? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to leave the public hearing open until the next meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think that's a wrap.
No, let's go one more.
Oh, we have one more, I'm sorry. All right, thank you, gentlemen, we'll see you next time. Please make some of those considerations, get back to the building department. Shrinking the wall, moving it back. Staying the code. All right, guys, thanks, we'll see you next time. Sorry about that. I forgot about Nine Oak. Is Nine Oak Avenue here?
Yeah.
Please step forward and state your name for the record.
Chris Littizia, Nine Oak Avenue.
Is that mic on?
Hello?
There you go. It was off. All right, one more time, your name?
Chris Littizia, Nine Oak Avenue.
Okay, Chris, anything changed since our last meeting?
No changes.
No changes at all? Any board members have any questions?
No.
All right, then you're going to have a seat. We should wrap this up. Public hearing is still open for Nine Oak Avenue. Anyone in the public that would like to comment regarding Nine Oak Avenue? Seeing none, I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Anyone have a resolution in the form of a motion for Nine Oak Avenue?
I have a resolution. The application for area variance is requested by Chris Littizia, whose address is Nine Oak Avenue, Tuckahoe, New York, Section 32, Block 8, Lot 32, for relief from the following sections of the zoning code 5-1.6.3, increasing a nonconformity. SEACRA resolution, based on this application submitted, the Zoning Board of Appeals finds and determines that the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of SEACRA and its implementing regulations. This Zoning Board of Appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application, and that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
And further, applicant resides at Nine Oak Avenue, Tuckahoe. Applicant's nonconforming garage was damaged beyond repair, and thus the garage was removed. Applicant submitted plans to reconstruct the garage in the exact footprint as the damaged garage, and permits were issued by the Village of Tuckahoe's Building Department. The new garage was mistakenly built 11 inches wider than approved. The 11 inches was built towards the applicant's property and was not built any further towards the neighbor's property line. Applicant now seeks to legalize the larger garage as the larger garage increased the nonconformity. We find the 11 inches as built towards the applicant's home and not towards the neighbor's property line will have no impact to the surrounding area. Therefore, recommendation is for the area variances to be granted as the benefit to the applicant of the area variances outweighs the detriment to health, safety, and the welfare of the neighborhood.